All right, we're going to bring the session of the Board of Supervisors back in from our close. We're going to go ahead and I know it's slightly off the tangent, but I like announcing the announcement from closed session and then we'll go to the invocation.
Mr. Chairman, the Board met for conference of legal counsel significant litigation pursuit of subvention D2 of government code section 549 by section 19, one case, and there was no report of action.
Thank you. All right, please stand up and pledge allegiance.
Mr. Hentel, we welcome you back to be leadess in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Almighty God, we pray this day for your ever enduring guidance. We ask for your focus and wisdom and fortitude that we may dispense our knowledge and facts[69.34][69.37]intelligently among all humanity of whom we serve. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking for agenda approval, addition and/or deletion. Mr. Gallagher moves. Mr. Hentel seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to move into public comment. I have quite a few cards and many of them center on the public hearing or the, it is the public hearing, pardon me, but the aftermath of the public hearing on the oil and dollar general matter. I'm not going to tell you that you can't speak during public comment. I will say that that matter, you can also speak during that time, although we are, have held a public hearing on that matter. And so what we would ask is that you limit any testimony if you have to do testimony during that period. So I'm going to go ahead and begin though with Silas. You want to step up, Silas?
Good morning, Silas Ross, Mercuri Service Chief. To write the whole, I got the numbers, some cost estimates that you requested regarding the Gold Flyer. Some of these are business estimates and may not be the actual and cost. And these are per day, as they otherwise. So a private hand crew is $7,100. A local government hand crew is $18,741. And that's going to be more than average. Some of the Marin hand crews are about $25,000 per day. Cowfire Firefighter One hand crew, which is not the inmate, so made up of three staff, is $7,297 per day. And a CDCR inmate hand crew is $3,174 per day. The air tankers are $2,695 per hour. Kind of gave it going to be an average, but some of the seats are smaller, aircraft are much smaller. The very large air tankers are going to be very much more than that. For instance, I saw there was a, on the very much larger, the biggest air tanker you see out there for one load per hour, probably like 1.8 hours, I believe, was $54,000 for that plane to take off, drop one load in like 1.8 hours. A Cowfire helicopter is $1,629 per hour. I don't have a private helicopter concept in the country. A local government engine, $4,894 again, that's an average, the Marin County or LA County engines are a lot more. The Cowfire is $1,451. A private dozer is $5,657,000. That would be an average. Larger, higher horsepower machines cost more, the low horsepower machines cost less. A Cowfire dozer costs $1,110 per day. And a privately hired water tender is $3,085 per day. And Cowfire does a ton of water. The latest estimate, cost estimate on the Cowfire is $37 million, and that was 9,564 acres with a $3,868 per acre cost. The Gold Flyer is $36 million with a total of 22,634 acres and a $1,590 per acre cost. Is there anything else you'd like me to expand on if I can?
We're just going to go to dozers because I've talked about this here, but I'm in the private. Dozers are so much more expensive than the Cowfire. Same tinders, the same your engines. I mean, it's, you're almost 4-1 with the cost.
Yes, I think it probably, I don't have an answer. I could, I could make a guess, but it may not be accurate. That has to be the fixed cost. So Cowfires already pay for the employee, whether they're sitting on the dozer or fixing a broken down pickup truck, that employee's paid for. And that was, that's my best estimate is the why, if that makes sense. And then for the privates, I think it's all a contract price where they agree upon what that cost is going to be. Perhaps if it paid less, it wouldn't come to it. I don't.
So he's suggesting it's after.
And then, I'm sorry, did you ask more?
No.
And then I was trying to give an update on last night's lightning. Cowfire go two fires, they're all small and handled. Also, industry cost fire from Diamond Mountain to be handled. And then the BLM, Arda, with 200 acres out in Peace Valley.
Anyone else?
Well, we briefly, I talked to briefly about that Carson BLM situation, Captain Doyle. And then Kathy's here, Kathy, she's the head of the Fire Department. It's concerning to me that we got that transfer from the Carson to the Susanville BLM with the infrastructure that's not being secured. So I'd love you to help me with that, or maybe the board write letters to Carson, Carson BLM, so we get that infrastructure transfer. Right now, they have a crew from Sacramento manning it. So I think a response might be to improve on that if the Susanville BLM.
Well, let me, let me do a little more research and get all the facts, put something on paper and get it out to the board. And I'll get it to you in a minute.
Okay.
Can we, could we do this as a separate agenda item in the future?
Yep. I think Silas. Mr. Pollard?
Sir. Hi, welcome on the mic, Pollard, from Illinois. I'll start by reading the recommendations of the Grand Jury real quick, so right now. Number one, says the entire SLPD Board Director should be renewed from office with nothing less than which is misconduct with the government code 3060. Number two, last county board supervisor assumes role to SLPD Board Directors for health code and safety code part 2.7, fire protection district law of 1987. Except in the case where county boards already similar, which we have. Number three, last county board supervisor should direct to determine and present calls consolidation options and strategies. Number four, number last county board supervisor to issue a resolution of consolidation and request consolidation between SLPD and adjacent districts. Number five, last county board supervisor directs accounting auditor to fully review and audit all accounts and financial activities of SLPD in the court back to the client. Number six, that's the most important one, last county board supervisor acting as the SLPD Board of Directors here correct past actions violations of the SLPD Board of Directors. Along with that, with the DA's report, I'm going to put this behind it. She mentioned here that most agencies respond by taking appropriate actions to cure remedies violations upon receipt of a simple letter by the district attorney, encourage them to do so. The district attorney will serve or demand, serve or demand to cure letter upon SLPD quarterly. However, it is unlikely the course of action would provoke change by the SLPD. In fact, she says, it is clear that the current board left to its own devices is completely devoid of the ability to accept responsibility, learn from the passage state, or heed device of watchdog entities such as the Grand Jury, and has no interest in doing so. That's straight from her. Gentlemen, I'm not here about my job at this point. I'm here for the fact that this community, who I served for nine years, is about to suffer over certain individuals, couldn't do this correctly, okay? This is not the district's fault, fault. This is certain individuals. And on top of that, it's been, to me, kind of circulated off and trying to swept underneath the carpet, which, I'm not saying it was, but it's what it felt like to myself and the men and women who have served with me, that all of us took note of it, correct, over office attorney, right? As well as I did. I'm asking you guys to put some integrity into this and believe in your both of office and how this is supposed to work and how government is supposed to work. And please, I implore you to take the advice of this and do this. Take actions, please, and make this right, okay? That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. All right, I do have cards remaining on the Dollar General matter. And so, as I said earlier, if you wish to speak on this matter during public comment and you gave me a card, please raise your hand down and you may do so. Otherwise, you can address the matter. Please come forward then, state your name for the record. Thank you.
Paul, should I refuse myself?
Yeah, you have previous one. One more per place. The record is so reflect that supervisor hand is presented in some by leaving the room. You may proceed.
I'm today here to seek insubclarity on the last meeting and trying to understand what took place in the last meeting. Because at the end of that meeting, it was my understanding that that was a done deal, we're back again. So I have some questions. There was only one objection at the last meeting because it was about Mr. Sein's petition that the Dollar General wasn't going to meet the requirements that was put down by Cal Trance and the Manning Board, but apparently they met all of those requirements. So there's no validity in the argument, but I think, your name is?
Gallagher.
Gallagher, Mr. Gallagher, my question's for you. The last meeting was about terminations and things that needed to be met as a requirement in order for that place to operate safely. And they brought in Cal Trance and the county commission to show that it's adequate to do all of it. But in that meeting, you being the only opposing person, your comment, I'll vote you before you make your motion. I'm not going to vote before Tom out of business.
I think you go back and listen to the reporter, I didn't say that.
Well, you go.
I pardon you. You may continue your comments, but there is no requirement for an answer from the board.
Okay, well, the arguments against Dollar General, not one of them have I had that had any validity, not one. And the community has began to show a groundswell of support in favor of Dollar General. Because the people in the city that are making decisions, the people of them in Doyle, you don't shop in the oil, you don't live in the oil, you need to consider the people in the oil. Because I understand that to be your job is what's good for the county and what's good for the people in the county. And there's more than enough evidence that this is good for the people of Doyle and the county. Now, I've only got one more thing to say. It's my understanding that it's illegal to use a public office to enhance a friend's or advance their financial gain. Now, I'm pretty sure I heard what I heard. And I'm pretty sure that Tom they referred to is the guy that owned the convenience store in Los Angeles, the road to Brooklyn. Now, it's no surprise, there's been a lot of opposition that hasn't been found yet. There's no reason not to let the people of Doyle have a store to shop in and put reasonable prices. And I'm just saying.
Thank you, sir. And you also, your name again, sir?
My name is Stephen Locke.
Thank you.
I'm in the door.
Do I have anybody else who wishes to speak during public comment?
So, so, Chairman, if I may just for a second.
Please.
Just so we're clear, there's really like three public comment periods in any Board of Supervisors meeting. There's a public comment period before we go into closed session, and that's generally promptly at 9:00 AM, right? And generally, anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board is fair game. There's another public comment period at 9:30, which is after we exit from the closed session. And again, that's anything within the general subject matter jurisdiction of the body. And then generally, there are public comment periods on each individual agenda item as we progress through it. We're now in that second period, which is not specific to Dollar General, but the open public comment period. And I think what Mr. Chairman was inviting folks to consider is, if you're all here on Dollar General, it might be appropriate to make that, he's not going to say you can't speak now, right? But that it might be appropriate to make your comments during that time, but it's your call. Is that fair or safe, Mr. Supervisor?
That's fair. As I stated earlier, I'm learning how this process.
I understand.
Thank you. So do I have anybody else who wishes to speak during public comment?
This public comment. Sorry.
Seeing that, I'm going to move to the agenda items reports by board members.
And could we invite supervisor Cameron back in at this time? Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Or not? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gallagher, would you like to begin the agenda of the Board of Supervisors by members?
I don't think I am.
Mr. Alba?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's a pleasure to see Mr. Hentel back and enjoying this, I'm glad he's healthy. Nice to see him, welcome back, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, it's kind of nice coming down, 1:39 now, the Cal fans actually did a little bit of work and the road is much smoother, much nicer, so we have never got to go north. And I'm going to save a little wear and tear on this, some tires, because he definitely throws on that. Other than that, tomorrow I'll be attending the RCR screening by at Lusanne, or telephone, whatever they call that thing. So I'll have that tomorrow, if anybody has anything they want. Can you bring him up from last meeting?
Mr. Hentel?
Well, he's going to be back. I want to agenda this, this deal I was talking about, to get, figure out the solar requirement on this new build, new construction. We're finally in to get some new construction in Susanville, Madison County. You know, the state requires solar on a new construction, then I guess there's an alternative where you can invest in the solar arrays in your local utility district. And from what I understand, in Sacramento County, you can invest in smud at a reduced rate to satisfy the state's condition on that. I think we need to explore that so that we can keep up with our little building boom here in Madison County. And he'll be back. Like I said, virtual family grade.
Well, it was nice to have him back, Mr. Hentel. He was also here yesterday when we had a slew of meetings. We had the LTSA bus meeting, the transportation meeting, which he chaired both of those meetings. And then we also had the last area, wait, local area, LaFco. That meeting, we've already heard some of the results of that meeting and the discussion of it. It is something that Board Supervisors will have to agenda, but I believe that we should be careful because from the Grand Jury's report, LaFco had a different interpretation of what the proper role of Board Supervisor was in that matter. And I believe it's important we highlight that. In the end, any special district that we see out there is of course the province of voters of that district. And they are ultimately the responsible party for what happens in their district area. But again, that's something that I can consider for agenda soon. We also had a Zoom meeting of behavioral health advisory board yesterday at 5:30. That particular board is hard to meet via Zoom, but it's now up to nine members discussing a lot of the problems that face our residents in this area. We covered housing and MHSA funding and how behavioral health is handled in our county. I think that board, I'm very proud of those members. There's now, I can see nine of them. They're working very hard, advisory boards are hard to fill at times. So I wanted to be prompt to make sure, and those individuals working very hard behind the scenes on a very, on a lot of the really difficult problems in our county. Having said that, we now have five minutes left. I think what we can do is start in on the consent calendar and see how far we get into it, and then move to our ten o'clock time, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we have a informational item regarding the California Department official allies of Jurassic Conservation Plan for Wolves. And I see that we have some state staff in the audience that may want to comment, so you might want to consider removing that for a second.
That's item G1. So we'll hold out, sir. Are there any other items that supervisor should pull?
In four. In four.
I wonder if Chairman, if he's going to have any other items that he's going to. Well, Mr. Gallagher, why is? Wait till I ask, what do you have? Well, I suppose we shall move on to the initial appeal. So what I'm looking for is a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
Sure.
Alba moves. Hentel seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we bring up G3 then? I think we have enough time for Eli, I think you can.
Good morning, Kelly. Can you just explain a little bit about this program, how it works and how it plays in this direction with Jessica?
So we've adopted a 18th budget reduction that happened for state DCSS. Each PLSA also took a reduction. So last year, or two years ago, we entered into, we, just the county and Jess, Jessica, entered into a contract where we had shared services and influence and we covered the expense of our attorney going to produce and junior labor workers and customers. How we spent it from the beginning of the budget test provision, we had an offset credit of what we actually spent for the hours to the new workers. This year, we both took in a budget test. So we're trying to maintain our legal services and school some of our funds together, even though they have to be separate, which is why we're doing our. Does that make sense?
Good job. That helps clarify a lot in my mind, so please be good at that. You know, it's important we have this relationship, and I think Jessica does a pretty good job as working together on this technical part of why we're doing this.
That's a little complicated.
So the question I have is, what happens when, when a spend their $20,000?
Then the 75 that we're putting in, will revert back to how it was two years ago, where so many boys passed, and we'll keep track of the hours which is spending in influence and.
Invoice them back?
And get, and get the cost of that. So I don't get the cost of that for the first plan of the thousand, that after that first plan, then we start charging for the cost of that. And where we were last this year, we're already at 23, I think we're 23, 25,000 that we spent in this budget this past week. So it's not a lot. Definitely the cost of that for this contract, but I still want to maintain our shared services in it because there's, we're too.
Right, and we have to combine those other small things.
And it's going forward there for money.
Well, I think it's a good job, and I would approve.
I'll second. Alba moves. Gallagher seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll put off the rest of the consent calendar and move to either C1 or time, sir. So we're not going to reopen the public hearing, but you're playing about our processes.
Certainly, thank you very much. So this matter was heard on July 28th, what's that, two weeks ago? It was noticed and heard as a public hearing. And testimony was received, questions were asked, both sides, tax, decisions, other hearing were provided, an opportunity to argue with respect to positions. The board held itself out as available to see documents or any other testimony that is upon which to make a decision at the conclusion of the proceedings. There was a motion made, and I don't remember what order it was, but there was a motion made to deny the appeal that failed for the line of the second. By the way, there were only three board members present. There was motion made to deny the appeal, which failed for the line of the second. Then there was a motion made to grant the appeal, which died for the line of the second. That is, continued the whole of the position that no sustained motion from part of this board means denial of the appeal. Yet there was an absent board member and, again, Yet there was an absent board member, and in conversation with the chair, staff had recommended that the matter be re-adjunged for today, provides an opportunity for that board member to participate in advance of today's day. All of the documents and materials that form the record on July 28th, two weeks ago, including a recording of the events of that day, has been provided to the supervisor in advance, so that he could be informed prior to participating in that. I would point out that although it's tempting to think that this is a do-over, it's not a do-over per se. This is a further proceedings, if you will, to permit the supervisor to participate. If public comment is received, it's...
It's our intent, of course, for citizens to always be heard. Any citizen, for instance, that came from Doyle, it would be our desire that they be heard in this matter. So I think I'm going to go through the cards. I remind you that this is not a do-over in the public hearing, so if it is your desire or your testimony that was already given two weeks ago, I would ask you to reconsider. However, I also don't wish to restrict free speech in any fashion. So if I call your name and you wish to come up and first speak, like I say, this won't be the public hearing. A public hearing, you recall, every year, I allow both opponents and then the opponents of the measure to speak. So if you wish to speak in general, you state your name and then speak as to which side you wish to be upon for the record, I think that would be appropriate. But once again, after that, I ask that you consider what evidence you may have already given before you do. So with that, I see, and I'm doing these in no particular order at this point, and pardon me if I'm pronouncing your names, because we all know that's a microaggression now. So Ames Snedeker.
One small point, third, Mr. Chairman, if I may. In this context, we think words matter. At least I think words matter. And so there's a distinction legally, in my mind, between published comment and testimony. Testimony typically is something received under oath and is a form of evidence. Well, that portion of the hearing has been included. There is no further evidence on this matter. It was noticed to be heard on the 28th. It was open for a period of time, and then it was closed, and all persons who couldn't present evidence at that time did something.
So this is simply public comment?
Yes, sir, and thank you for that opportunity.
Please.
My name is Ames Snedeker. I'm one of the principals of the development company, and I'll be the one owning the Dollar General. I was, I was not at a previous meeting. I got noticed on Friday, but this has been set on the agenda today, so I came into town, and I just wanted to be heard here today. I want to let you guys know that the application process with the county was, was handled very professionally. I think you talked to the planners and staff, you'll find that we submitted one of the most, I thought, one of the most complete packages they've probably ever seen. I take great pride in our team's work, and we do a tremendous amount of due diligence before we even put aside our contract to consider. And a lot of democratic research was done, a lot of due diligence with the site was done. So I made the decision for today, for the endeavor here. We made the application, it was well received, we answered all the comments, and then after receiving unanimous approval of the planning commission, we're really excited about the project in the board, a little surprised after the vote, the last meeting, a little bit more surprised about Friday, receiving notice, such short notice that I would even be here Tuesday for this meeting. I would just ask that you listen to the residents of Doyle that are here today. I do a lot of these meetings with one of Dollar General's larger developers, and we're working here in California. Usually it's, you know, eighty people speaking against and two people speaking for a project. It's really hard to get people out and support the project. We haven't had any issues. People have come out of the woodwork and supported the project for Doyle. I think when we take a look at it from thirty thousand feet, I live in a small community. I don't like driving five plus miles to the store. And just after making the drive from Doyle north here, I understand why people in Doyle, and Dollar General understands why people in Doyle, I'm not hopping on the highway and drive trucks over eighty-five miles an hour.
And it's not like highway law.
Their only choice right now is gas, which is probably against purposes. And it's a limited product for them. One thing I want to address with that, I know the opposition to this matter may or may not be a competitor in a sense of retail, but after doing these, including economic impact studies, I can tell you that convenience stores and Dollar General are not competitors. They exist, not necessarily in vacuum, but they complement each other's product assortments. You won't go to Dollar General to get gas. They go to the everyday needs, the milk, the eggs, the things they don't want to drive to a, because you guys have a Winko or a grocery outlet, they don't want to drive. It's a convenience. It's not necessarily cigarettes, beer, and gas, and gas station, ice. So, but convenience stores, you have the ability to change their product assortment. I don't see any way that Dollar General would have an adverse effect on an existing convenience store, gas station in that town, in Doyle. There's just too much demand. I can just tell you that I wouldn't be here speaking in front of you if there wasn't a tremendous amount of demand for a Dollar General store. So I just ask that you listen to what the Dollar General folks, or Doyle folks say about what their needs are, the issues that were brought up on appeal, on just commenting that, you know, they were, you've got a county trans engineer, you've got city staff and planners and engineers who review the traffic. For you guys to go against it, you would have to substitute a layman's judgment for traffic and issues over county trans, and over a city, over a county planner, a county engineer. I just don't think that's the right thing to do. That's just my personal opinion. But I just ask that you look at the, look at the appeal, look at the all reports, all the due diligence that was done, and listen to the people, and make the best decision you can. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve Powell.
Good morning. Thanks for having us back. I am, there's no additional new information from July 28th. Just wanted to say that we're here and available for questions if need be, and I know that our planner's here also, so I just want to make ourselves available.
Thank you. Wade Wyden.
Hi, just the same, just for clarification, the cards that I filled out, as they say, in support of, they should be in opposition to the appeal.
Like I said, it's public comment here. And for clarification, I would hear that there's not a random order, this is the order that we received, I think is what I should have said. Kathleen Tater.
I'm here, I'm a resident, and I have my care. I'm also the fire chief at Doyle, I'm attached to this place. And I am here today because I missed the last meeting I had, definitely, I couldn't find me, so I could ring with me today if you would like them. I know you don't have to accept any more evidence, but there's seventy, over seventy letters in support of the Dollar General for Doyle. Doyle's a very small community. We don't have a whole lot out there. And the reason that I'm here today is because I talk to a lot of people, and I see a lot of people out there, and, like I said, I've lived here my entire life. We don't have a lot of options. We have a lot of people who have a very limited income, who don't have vehicles, have no way to get anywhere to purchase groceries, or any kind of supplies behind. Dollar General would be a very, very great asset for our community. The people that I've talked to, they're, I can get hundreds, at least a couple hundred or more, if you believe in the land, so people in favor of it. They have no place to shop. What we have, we do have Doyle JLS, and I'm not saying anything bad about them, but they do have very, very high prices for such a small area, so many people that are on their living income. I really don't see, you know, the reason why we can't have our store, let's go has one, Jamesville has one, Stevensville has one, why can't Doyle have one? We have a lot of people that, like I said, need it, want it, and I think it would be a good asset for our community. And that's my contribution, because I just, because people accept them. And I just say my little piece. And these are all Doyle's residents, and they're all taxpayers, taxpayers, movers, very small ones. Phone numbers, physical addresses, everything on this.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Please.
If you open the door for this, then you have to open it through the other side. And then we're gonna, I'm sorry, I have a strong reaction to the proposition of opening it once again.
At this time, it's my feeling that we did set ground rules, so that the public hearing was two weeks ago, and I did state at the beginning of this meeting that I would accept the due evidence. So I apologize for a difficult decision, so you understand.
No, I understand. I understand, I swear, I'm like, let everybody, all the voters and everybody else know because you accept their, their letters that are supported.
That would be a threat, but...
That's not a threat, no. I mean, I would, you know, to let them know that you guys would accept that.
Feel free to blame that on them, please.
I will, I will do that.
Preferably, you can take all the blame on the world.
Well, and what I would ask you to consider is that the public hearing was set for two weeks ago.
Right, I understand that, but I've applied to it.
And so if a public official, one has a standard, and one has to be, I would expect that a public official would understand that.
Oh, yeah, and I was on the board for ten years, on the school board for a stage. I understand that, so I'm just, but I just, I don't wonder why I didn't get it. Anyway, that's just, I just wanted to let you guys know that, I think it would be an asset, and we do really need that.
Thank you. Brandon Moss.
I understand that the last that was called in today was reported to be viewed, and I came in today to support from the store. My position is still the same, I believe people in Doyle definitely asked for it. I understood that we could enter in what she had, yet we held this meeting to enter in someone else's view, to vote. I just don't understand why we'd enter in something there, and I'll enter in something else.
Because that was the time that was noticed for the receipt of evidence. If evidence had been presented on that date at that time, it would have been provided in advance of today's meeting, so that he could review it.
Okay, but nobody that was at the last one knew that this was going to happen, so this kind of threw a curveball at it.
But that doesn't mean that they couldn't have presented themselves, and that would have impressed. What if he wasn't?
Okay, well, I understand that, you know, and like I said, a lot of the citizens are going to be, you know, coming down here to know every hint, and now some colleagues here. But I just thought that since this person wasn't here, that it would be a good idea to enter that in. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Stephen Moss.
I spoke, I have a question.
Thank you. Do I have, I do have somebody else. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Golda Feathers, and thank you for giving me a moment. I did not know about this Dollar General situation in Doyle, but I really do see the validity of the community of Doyle needing a Dollar General, little store that's right there in their community that possibly they could want to, in case they don't have transportation, and things of that matter. And it keeps money from going to Reno, it keeps the money in our county for the tax revenue that can come from the Dollar General. There's other items than, you know, food items at a Dollar General. And the highway stores, leaving both of them nameless, they have always been there as highway stores for people that are on the highway transporting between point A, point B. And I don't think they're going to get her one bit, because they both offer, you know, little things to eat, or, you know, gas and things of that nature. So I don't see the competition there at all. And I bet I do see the need for the community to not have to drive almost an hour to Reno, bringing the revenue to Reno, which is really, we've got to keep our tax revenue in our county as much as humanly possible. And to drive all the way to Susanville, I used to live in Milford for a long time, I guess. And, well, if I had a choice, given Milford, I was halfway between Reno and halfway between Susanville, Reno really offered beaucoup places to shop, and they would end up with my money unfortunate for the revenue that's needed in our county, but it was just a choice situation, and I think that that would balance that choice and bring in more tax revenue in our county by keeping it here. And it would be pleasing to the Doyle community not that I lived there, or, and I do know a few people that live out there, but I really didn't know, I'm just speaking up, in the half of the idea of the Dollar General being there for that state, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Drive anybody else, person to speak.
Hey, gentlemen, my name is Frank Aragon. I'm the property owner of, I'm trying to sell the Dollar General. I want to tell you, I'm with Reno in eighty-five, with the twenty combat engineers in Reno who didn't want us to get annual training up here to, um, to the MCR, Army, they will. And that was like thirty years ago. I come back, and it still looks the same. A friend of mine moved up here in 2005, and I used to live a lot. We helped him a lot, did this and that, purchased some property in 2015, property in question, and we cleaned it up. It looked pretty bad. It looked bad. And we made a lot of trips and dumped. Dollar General, they have a twelve thousand, they can hold twelve thousand, twelve thousand items in their inventory. I don't know what the pay list, store adds on, probably five hundred or so, you know, twelve thousand versus five hundred, so it's good business. We got a lot of money invested in this. We cleaned it up, we made the property, we did a lot. And the people deserve a nice place to go shop. Sometimes I think, I don't know if you guys have any love for those, but I don't know if there's been any new projects in the last thirty years. Still looks the same, almost here to wait.
Thank you. State your name for the record, please.
Thomas Franklin.
Thank you, go ahead.
I bought the property in Jane'sville eighty-one, built a house there in eighty-eight, moved to Doyle in ninety-nine. So I've been in the county forty-something years. Just like the previous gentleman said, there has been no change in Doyle at that time. There was a church built a couple of years ago, I don't know if they pay any property taxes, I'm sure no sales taxes. Post office in ninety-five, same thing, federal ninety-eight, they pay no taxes. Half a dozen to a dozen homes, maybe? Otherwise, there's been no development there. And we're halfway between Susanville and Reno. As the gal said, generally, most of us go to Reno, because the distance is about the same, and there's more places to shop, and better prices generally than in Susanville. I feel sorry for, I still drive, so I have choices. I feel sorry for the elderly who don't drive, because they have no place to shop. They either have to beg a ride to Susanville or Reno with a friend, which is inconvenient, or take the bus, which is even more inconvenient. The town needs some place to shop that with reasonable prices, will probably still be a little higher than Susanville and Reno, but it needs something. Maybe it's my Scottish heritage, but I refuse to pay five or ten times what some of them should cost, I'd just go without it. So if you're really looking out at, for the citizens in the South County, this thing should be approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Please state your name.
Yeah, my name is...
Yeah, my name is Eric Moss.
Thank you.
I came really just to add that I'm a huge supporter of the Dollar General from just a dozen people that I've talked to in the last few days. I think this additional meeting has brought a lot of attention to this for the community, even though a lot of people I spoke with didn't have an opportunity to drive here whether they were working or had transportation issues. And all those things I've already said, I've got a lot of people that still have it in their heart. So, really, I just wanted to come and show support for that and purpose in many people could not be here.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else who, yes, please?
I hope you guys are doing well, to start off, and I just want to say that we were actually...
I'm sorry, you guys gave your name again.
Oh, sorry. My name is Jay. I work and manage the Doyle's Shell Station in Buena California. I just wanted to state that we were actually told there was not gonna be any public comments or anyone speaking at all today. There was gonna be another vote today. So, therefore, we simply didn't bring anyone with us or didn't bring any more evidence. And I thank you guys for not having any evidence because we had to present everything way before the meeting, until anything happened. I mean, if we were to start doing that, then we could get many more people to come here, many more signatures, and many more letters as well. But then we're just looking at the book again, and I stand here and talk about everything that everyone just mentioned again. But again, we're just doing the same thing again and again. So, just wanted to mention that we were told something else. And that's why we're not touching base on things that we've already touched base on. And I appreciate you guys' time and we're considering this appeal. Thank you, guys.
Of course, you understand that we are not exactly getting tested by you. You heard us say that.
Yes, sir.
But at the same time, the United States remains...
Yeah, I completely understand. No worries. No worries.
We will not restrict public comment other than if it interferes with the, our actual work here.
Absolutely.
Is our work itself.
Of course. I completely understand. I was just wanting to make sure that you guys knew that. We didn't know. All right. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Please step forward. State your name.
Good morning. I'm John Kertan. I'm owner of Morning Glory in Milford. And we've been serving in the county since nineteen twenty-one. And we heavily rely on some of those stuff up there that could or could not be devastated by the Dollar General. Just here, just to make my presence and let you know that we do a lot for the community and provide all the essential, uh, materials, ice, jobs, earth police. And I just wanted to let you know that here and support of not putting in a Dollar General. And I figured if there's a problem, I'll go by, say, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have anybody else who should speak sometime? Seeing that, I'll bring it back up to the board. At this point, we'll suppose have deliberations with Mr. Hamill now, I mean, involved and I can see where that goes from there.
Well, I got this packet on Friday. I started prior to Friday, although it was kind of a no-brainer, you know? That, you know, it's this capitalism work in here. Nobody's getting... And I live in Janesville, so I'm well aware of all the general. But as a supervisor and after reading the packet, I have some major questions. Which was how staff handled this. I mean, one time I asked Tony Shaw, how can we took... And we all know who Tony Shaw is, Assistant CIO. I asked him one time, how can government take so long to work, get things done? And he says, well, you only have one time to do it, and you gotta take your time so you do it right. And I'm kind of amazed at the timeline on this from December nineteenth of last year to right now. And it's approved. Just, that just floored me. And I have some major concerns with, with the Dollar General. I, the project itself, I don't have...I think the town needs it, but I have some big concerns with the store itself. And I can't believe Caltrans signed on, signed off on that intersection. It's at an angle. I was out there Sunday evening. And if you're like me, can't turn your head to the right, to the left, what's the average speed right there? Seventy-five miles an hour at that intersection? And you're gonna have a hundred cars a day pull in there roughly? And I have, I have a problem with that intersection. I'll need perpendicular to the freeway. And there's nothing in your permit that says that needs to be corrected. And it needs to be widened back, you know, and then the county saying that it's not, it's wide enough for everything. And I just, looking at it Sunday, I didn't like...Personally, I'm not an engineer. I'm just dumb pharma. But to get rigs in and out of that place, right at the intersection, that intersection needs to be fixed, as far as I'm concerned. The other problem I have, as I said, and it's the same problem with the Janesville one, and it's the same footprint, and it's about public safety, and that's the kind of things I think about. Is there's only one way in and one way out of your store, and that, I believe that needs to be corrected. I've been by the Janesville store when you've had two beverage distributors there and a Dollar General truck inside, and what happens when an elderly person, like my mother, who's eighty-six years old and absolutely loves Dollar General, she goes in there and falls down, and how do you get a fire truck and an ambulance in there to get her up? Plus, get the customers out? You know, it's, those are kind of some of the mistakes that need fixed. And then even looking further down the road, you know, we've had a lot, we're doing a lot of work on trying to get three ninety-five expanded. And what's gonna happen? Are you guys gonna sue the county ten, fifteen years down the road when your store becomes on, instead of highway frontage, becomes on a frontage road? I mean, that's a concern I have. Where's the exposure to the county at that point in time? Because we permitted this to happen. Does that make sense? Richard?
Uh, no, it doesn't make sense. I'm not sure I understand the question. If Caltrans...
If three ninety-five was to be expanded to four lane, they're limited, they're gonna control the access. So, that would be, that store would be on frontage road at that point in time because there's nothing to cross, to warrant, overpass there, nothing type of thing.
So, I raise a charge for the question that would be dealt with within that project along with several hundred other accesses that come along with it.
Exactly. I mean, it's, there's something about it. You know, and then with the packet I was given, there was three hundred signatures against, and this is directed at staff. There was three hundred signatures against this project. And I, I'm like tenure on this board, I've seen three residents of Ward Lake Road, and we have a major fit with Hat Creek Construction that provides over a hundred direct jobs in Lassen County. And where was the validity of the, of the signatures in that, in that? You know, like I said, that's the evidence I was presenting. You know, that was a...And I read the transcripts and I think, and listened to the hearing and, you know, I... We need to fix some mistakes here before we move forward, I think. I think that you guys were pushing this thing to get it through, and it needed just a little bit more vetting out. Does that make sense? I mean, that's, that's my opinion.
Can we, can I count to three here or not, as it were? Can we identify what specific areas so that they can know leaving out of here today need to be addressed in a meaningful way so that there can be a fleshing out on those issues?
The access to the store, in and out, you know, the one way in and one way out. You know, we can't put a subdivision in a place with one, with one way in and one way out. We've got a store here. We're not gonna have a hundred, seventy-five to a hundred customers a day. And there's one way in and one way out, and you've got deliveries. You know, of course, it works. I'm not...But it needs to be addressed.
All right. Now, to be clear on that, I want to make sure I understand. Are you speaking of one-way? What is that road that it accesses? Susan Drive or something of the like? Mr. Planner, do you know?
Old Highway Road.
Old Highway Road.
Old Highway Road. Thank you. Are we talking about one access to that? Or, or one access to the highway, three ninety-five?
No, there's just one access off, off the old highway.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I'm not sure that this is the appropriate forum to discuss adding additional or changing conditions to a project that's been approved by the planning commission. The purpose of this decision is either to grant an appeal or to deny an appeal. Now, if that appeal is granted, then I think, you know, one might expect that it would go back to the drawing board with other, with other conditions. But I think until that decision is made, whether or not the decision, the appeal is gonna be granted, it's probably bringing to order to begin discussions about additional conditions.
Well, I believe what we're hearing is Mr. Hamill's reasons for granting the appeal, but what we're hearing. That is correct?
Well, I just have some concerns that I'd like to be, that weren't addressed, you know?
And so, it would be your desire for applicant to, in such a case, the only way that answers that would be to grant the appeal, deny the permit, begin the process over. Is that not correct?
Well, that's correct, but I'd like to comment on the concerns that Mr. Hamill raised about access. And I will only say that this department in painstaking effort to evaluate that did enter into early consultation with many agencies, including Caltrans. So, that's before we went through the environmental review process. And we went through that process. At the end of that, they had comments, those were in the packet. There was this discussion at the previous board meeting. And before that, it was staff's earnest effort to clarify if there are any issues. And again, public works, Lassen County public works, no concerns, absolutely none. Same thing with Caltrans. We reached out to him for the third one. And again, that's, of course, one that's been submitted, and again, absolutely no concerns. So, the idea that we would insert our judgment for those professional traffic engineers and planners, we don't do that. We're simply providing the evidence that's been given to us. And, you know, in terms of the insinuation of pack rate, whatever, that we somehow stacked the deck, we don't. That's absolutely wrong. That's why you have resolutions for or against. We're presenting you with the information. You make the decision, and it's not, we're not trying to influence it. We're trying to give you the information. And that's what I think staff did, and they did a great job. Now, falls to your part. And again, you have a resolution for or against.
Mr. Almott.
Thank you. You know, the, I don't want to reiterate anything, so the only thing I would have to add is, you know, just talk about timelines and speediness, giving some of these things through the, through the department. And some are a lot faster than others. And when you have a professional such as the Dollar General, who does these things all the time, they know a county funding department or a city is going to be wanting. And so, they have all their ducks in a row. They have everything lined up. So, when they give it to the department, boom, sure you don't. Somebody that doesn't do this all the time, they don't know all the ins and the outs and all the requirements. So, they think they've got something, and then when it gets there, it's like, well, now you gotta go back and do this. So, I mean, so some timelines are going to be much faster for other, for certainly individuals and others committing on how well that applicant moves the process for the, to the county or the city. Like I said, the Dollar General does it all the time. That's why the timeline is much faster. In this case, it would be in Great Willamette that they do these things very often. So, that's increased the time. Very promotion on the advocate.
Do you second the statement? We got a different motion, you know, one that might pass.
Chairman, I'll make the motion that we deny the appeal based on the information stated last time. The motion I made last time.
We have...
We have the appeal, right?
We have a motion on the floor. Motion dies for lack of second. Gentlemen. Mr. Gallagher, did you want to retry your motion for my opinion?
Sure. I'll, I'll make the motion that we grant the appeal.
I'll second it because we need to, we need to address something.
I have a motion in the session. Roll call, though. Yeah, we can have this session.
You know, what's the use of that even finding? I mean, these guys have gone through this, they understand that we are finding departments. What's the use of having, of doing the environmental impact report, you know, going to city and all this stuff? What's the use of having Caltrans? We're trying to second, we have other professionals. And, I mean, what an insult it is slapping the face, Caltrans, or slapping the face to our planning commissioners. I mean...
Eric, just because you work for Caltrans doesn't make, I mean, you're...
Oh, yeah. I work for Caltrans.
No, no. Just let me speak to you.
Wait. Actually, Mr. Almott doesn't have the floor.
Yeah, and so, I mean, we need to be realistic, sir. I mean, we're complaining all the time that we need business, we need industry, you know, and then we get somebody that wants to come in. We're just, I mean, it's just asking, but anyway, we're... I'm...
Mr. Hamill has the floor.
I'm not opposed to the project. I'm just opposed to some of the things that aren't included in it. And I've seen you talk about projects before, saying, well, this needs to be added and that needs to be added. That's your opinion. That's my opinion that, you know, I'd like to see two ways, more than one way in and one way out of that store. I watched the Janesville Fire Department last night, like I said, that they have a great concern that when it happens, when they have an injury at the Janesville Dollar General, about access. Because there's one way in and one way out. And what I got, and what I got to me, it's the same footprint. I mean, like you said, yeah, they know exactly what they're doing. Hell, yeah. They gave it. It's the same, same store, you know, it's a cookie, good deal. And that's fine. That's their business model. And, you know, Dollar General has been great for Janesville because guess what? It made those other stores step up to the plate. But I just want to see a few things changed. It's just like the old highway there. I think that it's, you know, the amount of traffic that's gonna be on that road, I'd like to see that road fixed. You know, now instead of later when it's all crumbled down because of the increased amount of traffic. I have a concern about that. And that's all I'm saying. It's not that I oppose the project. I think it'll be great for Doyle. I think they're gonna compete with these other stores a little, but not much. I mean, in Janesville, you couldn't buy gas. It would get, you know, we're in the same boat. Gas was always thirty cents a gallon cheaper. So, in order for the mini-mart in Janesville to compete, they drop the price of gas to the same rate as Susanville. To increase their business. I mean, that's capitalism. That's what we're all about.
I would note that the last time that there was a view on appeal that I can remember from the planning commission about business coming into town or into the county, that Mr. Almott voted against it. And that was the... Mr. Alba voted against it, and that was the cannabis dispenser. And that particular business had all of the requirements of the permit, and that particular business settles a legal, a legal product. So, Mr. Alba was looking in that moment to place himself above the decision of the planning board and board.
And then as far as the plant, the planning commission, the planning commission only knows what they're told, just like United, you have to do your research on this. That's why I say, I personally go down there, I didn't like, I don't like that intersection, I think it's dangerous.
Mr. Gallagher has the floor.
So, I want to go back here, just make the statement I made the last time. I would be for this project if it wasn't to partially kill the business of one might constituents. We fought really hard for Morning Glory with the PIA, and to be able to keep the business here, and make it prosper, and again, local business is what we're all looking for, and something to bring in more taxes and money, and I'm all for that. But, if, if Dollar General would purchase their items locally, then I don't think we'd have a problem, but that's not what they did. And potentially, they could have one of our constituents, my constituents, go out of business as a result of that, and I'm, I'm all for that. So, if their business model changed, and they would buy it, that'd be great, and I'd be for it. So, I'd be, you know, I'm taking the same path you took with the, with the dispenser, that's my personal thing, I'm for local business, I want local business to prosper, and I'm not going to do it if the businesses are going to buy their product locally. That's why I fought hard for them with the PIA.
Do I have any more discussion? A call question. Roll call though.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Yes.
Supervisor Hamill.
Yes.
Supervisor Alba.
No.
Supervisor Teeter.
Yes.
Don't you care, you, Frank?
Can the applicant ask a quick question on?
No, time for that to conclude, thank you.
What we're supposed to do on?
Well, we'll be certain of course on.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I think it's important at this point that we can find those remarks to writing.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Not trying to come off the wrong way, just, it's important at this point. Thank you.
So, we're going to go ahead and break this back into session.
Yeah, I'll sit back.
So, we're going to end it from recess, and we're going to take up matter G1.
Mr. Chairman, I just put this item on the agenda because the couple of weeks ago, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife was here to discuss the gray wolves, they, they promised a draft conservation plan with several items, that was delivered in kind of in conventional fashion, going to just one of the supervisors. So, I just put it on the agenda so that everyone would have that information, and provide direction to staff if they so desire. I know Mr. Loudon and others from California Department of Fish and Wildlife are here, maybe we should provide some summary or comments on it.
Corey Tony is Kent's water, is he all again? I know, we're just here to be a resource for you guys, however you need us, for this document, but it sounds like maybe folks need more time with it, before we can actually discuss, or I can alternate kind of way, and then, if that's the case, maybe we could make a plan, like what happens next? Do we get a group of people to actually sit down together to work on it, or do you want more time to review it, and then come back for some kind of discussion, or just throwing that out there for next steps, to work together to get things done?
So, are we going to re-agendize this matter, I guess, for, I'm not quite sure, I haven't looked at the plan myself yet, so. I mean, are we going to, or will we need to?
My concern is the direct loss thing and payment and restitution for ranchers' farmers. I'd really love to dive into that, I'd really like to see a program for that.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I privately suggested to Kent might be some advice that the board would wish also to convey, and that was that for a plan like this, it obviously takes time, particularly when you deal with state agency and funding funding for whatever that plan is. And so, my suggestion was for the department to come up with basically what amounts to an interim program, for maybe a period of a year, or maybe two, that addresses some of the immediate impacts of deflation and that sort of thing, and then, you know, set themselves a deadline for completing funding the long-term plan, and maybe learn a little bit from the interim plan, just a suggestion I had.
Mr. Gallagher?
I did have time to read it, not to sit down and take it all in, but I would like to be able to go through it sometime by my own, and figure out what can be added, taken away, things like that, discuss with you about, you know, goals and objectives and things like that. So, I think it'd be good if we could clear it off at some future meeting and discuss it once again, and if you wanted to have a small committee, I'd be more than willing to be on that, to have a one-on-one, again, with W. staff, and Eric would like to be on that too.
And there's always also the venue of the Fish and Fish and Wildlife Commission too, or local Fish and Wildlife Commission, certainly, as a state, that sort of discussion. It is, it's progress. So, I suppose at this point, though, what we should say is we appreciate getting them a chance to weigh in on the whole plan, we'll take that advice, and that we do want further dialogue, and Mr. Hammond suggests one of the areas of restitution for those ranchers that are suffering loss, but that also, those that Kent weren't determining, you know, determination to what killed the animal, and we've done this one before, so it is certainly a topic that needs to be touched.
I mean, I haven't had time to go through this, like Chris said, on my plan, I just curiously read this stuff, you know, and, to be honest with you, it wasn't what I thought it was. You know, this is supposed to be a draft plan, yet within this plan, we have, you know, direct loss with a frozen con, we have indirect loss, frozen con, we have direct compensation, we have paid-for presence. I thought the whole plan was going to be, this is what our, our draft is going to be, we're going to have direct loss, we're going to have this kind of a program, and if someone does this, this is going to be, this is our draft plan, this is what we are proposing, not, these are all the things we're thinking about, what do you want? I mean, that's, that's what I thought was going to be, this is what we are proposing. And instead, we thought, okay, these are all the options, not what do you want? And, you know, there's a lot of narrative in here that, I mean, I guess for the person that isn't very well aware of what's going on, it's good to have, as part of what a lone wolf does, and what a pack does, and, I mean, I thought this was going to be much more detailed, pick apart, rather than go through the whole process with you and develop the plan. And you said you had to come back to the draft plan, I did with the draft plan, not just a bunch of hoopla, this is what we're thinking about, and these are our options, what do you think, I didn't think it was going to be that, but maybe that was a misconception on my part, which very well could have been. You can ask my supervisor, I can dictate it sometimes.
If I may, I think, thanks for that, and I think that's what's good about us sitting down and talking, so we get to fumble around the same page, and that's an important concept, because I think maybe my conception of it was that we wanted to just flesh out the foundation of it, and we thought, I thought that, and I think others thought, that it would make sense that be crafted together. So, I think especially, I, it makes sense to me that you would want to have livestock interests firmly in it from the beginning, so a plan is crafted that makes sense from a livestock perspective of things, not necessarily a biologist's perspective of things. And, and so, this was kind of meant to be, I think some of the late work of, here are some possibilities, but it's an important next step for us, whatever body that is that we form, to get together, to actually start crunching it out. So, what, how, and I think it talks about in there, too, like, what are the mechanisms by which it works? So, for instance, not to get into the whole thing, but there's also, there's two, there's two prongs to that, there's the direct loss, and then there's the indirect loss aspect of it. And, and so, with the indirect loss, we've recognized that different folks on the landscape have different levels of risk, and so it's reasonable to think that people with more risk would be reimbursed at a higher rate than lower-risk folks. But we from, 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 together, that has to make sense from a livestock perspective, I think, and I think that that could only work from, from the benefit of us working together. None of that made any sense at all.
Well, why are you complicating things? I mean, it's, you know, it's pretty cut and dry, but I think that the way it is now is, you know, it's typical of something with a state that, you know, to prove a loss is almost impossible.
It says it.
Yeah. So, you know, density laws, I mean, I don't know, it just, you're making, you're making it too complicated.
Well, that is, one approach that won't count is to make it very simple, and for instance, and that's how it works in a lot of states, and that's the direct loss.
Yeah, why don't we reinvent the wheel?
I, it's not necessarily that, so most states have a direct loss, so they pay a hundred percent for confirmed, fifty percent for probable, and, and that's good. The indirect loss approach addresses all of the other issues, so, so where you can't make confirmation of wolves might have done, missing livestock that potentially could have been due to wolves, weight loss potentially because of wolves, conception rates declining potentially because of wolves, maybe you have to hire more staff, or a lane driver, or something. It recognizes that there's other loss out there that isn't easily addressed by a dead or injured livestock, and that's what the paid-for presence developed by the Mexico program, down in Arizona in New Mexico. Some people would submit that those indirect losses are actually their higher losses, and those are the harder ones to measure.
Well, it has been testimony before the board at different times that the direct loss is hard to prove, the indirect loss could actually be an attempt to find money for, you know, for those losses that you can't prove necessarily. Now, whether or not it's possible or not is another question entirely, but one, the argument that this is the department attempting to find a way around that. Mr. Alba.
You know, I appreciate the fact that you're on board with the ranchers, the livestock owners, et cetera, in developing this draft full plan. In all fairness, we tried that in the original one, we got our asses handed to us, so, I mean, we just beat our head against the wall by trying to work together again on this. I mean, hopefully we're not, but we tried it last time with the original plan, and the only people that were listening to it seemed like, in my opinion, was the wolf lovers, was the Center for Biological Diversity, was the people in San Francisco and LA and San Diego, that don't have any skin, they just have their idea of people, the people that are actually out there living, that were wanting to listen. So, I mean, is this going to turn into the same thing again? Well, we listened to the last panel of board supervisors, and we listened to the California Cow Association, somehow you guys are going to be a loss if you didn't consult with them, and, I mean, that's the part that's very discouraging, and we tried this once, we lost, we just, we didn't get what we wanted or needed, or the one happened to take the losses, and here we are again, trying to be developed, we've got all these other ideas, I mean, I guess I could go through this here and criticize it, we can have a working group, but I mean, if it can do any better, if it can be listened to, it could be all for exercise.
I mean, I hope so, I think it's important that actual wolf conservation plan does call for the potential for a compensation program, for instance. It's been, I'm in a long road, but we're here at this place and time where it looks like the ball is moving up the field, and it's been amazing here in California, that compensation itself has been a controversial issue, I haven't really seen that before, but here we are at this point where we can really maybe do something, and actually get a compensation program implemented. I think all other wolf states do have some kind of compensation program, and it might be notable that California is the only one that does not. As you all know, too, there is no means of control of problem wolves in California, and that's the only state that that's true as well. So, I think the importance for these mitigating measures is pretty high, all we have is a little bit of deterrent tools that don't work all places, and that's all that we have, communication, relationships, a little bit of deterrent tools, that's about all that we have for helping to deterize that conflict on the ground. And here is a chance for us, all of us, to work together to potentially make that compensation program happen. I think one way that I personally look at it is, of course, if California is to have wolves, they're going to exist on working landscapes for the most part. As you know, there's a lot of people in the state that, that's important to them as far as wolves themselves and other wildlife and open space value. But once again, agriculture is the service that, that happens, and maybe this is a way for society's opportunity to pay agriculture for that effort. So, agriculture isn't sitting there alone, providing a re-qualization.
Mr. Gallagher?
Kent, I think that you bring it up to the Mexican wolf, but heck, if there's already a plan in place that is working for the Mexican wolf, maybe that's something that you could, and it's a proven plan, maybe that's something we can bring forward here, and make some, you know, wherever the changes are we even make to associate with the wolf that's here, and move on with that plan, instead of trying to, you know, ride it all over again. But I appreciate, what I saw in here, what I appreciated was some of the concerns that have been expressed here. But I appreciate, what I saw in here, what I appreciated was some of the concerns that have been expressed here often about what is a wolf? And so you did talk about the DNA and what wolf hybrids were, and what coyotes are, and what wolf dogs are. So it's encouraging to see that that's coming about. And for Brian, I'd like to see maybe some more expansion on the deer and elk conservation effort here. Maybe some starting points, because I know you're starting to take a look at what those populations are, get some good counts. And at least that we have a baseline to go by and look to see if there's some impact as a result of wolves dealing with the elk and deer population. So, you know, putting that in the plan thing is important because historically you can look back and say, okay, well, this is what it was when we started, now, now we're, you know, ten years down the line. And is there something that needs to be tweaked in order to make that better?
Yeah, and I think that is a good point. And so for instance, if whatever body that was that was assembled to look at these things, if we decided that some form of paper presence was a good program for California, then I think the next really good step is that the opportunity where you do have an interim plan in place, we could call it down and ask them, what are the shortcomings? If you could build this program, that was the habit for however long it's been, five years, what would you do to make it better? Because I think that is the case, is these things, a window opens sometimes only once. And if you don't get it the best that you possibly can, you would be stuck with something lesser than welcome for them. That's a good place to start with base and then talk about it and where to actually build from there. I did learn recently, and this is pretty cool, if folks here were to be interested in it, our geneticist is able to travel here to give a talk herself on, because it is technical and it is complicated. I have a difficult time as a biologist keeping up with her. She's very smart, she does do a really good job to, as I say, dumb it down for people like me. And she could very better explain all of that stuff, and she is a pretty enjoyable person to have around. I think she's happy to do that for Lassen County. I think the board would be interested in that, but I think that there are particular residents and livestock folks that would be interested in that as well. To somehow we could work on finding a way to get that to happen.
Like I said, I think it would be my preference that this be presented as a fishing game commission, and then any sort of comment over there and get a more complete plan to comment on. This supervisor Alwalt pointed out. And that way you can get feedback from Lassen County that I'm certainly more suited. I don't know. And that way if individuals supervise, if they want to make an attempt at fishing game, that might be the appropriate place for your geneticist to show up.
Yeah, and pardon my ignorance there, I actually don't know how that works to talk to a fishing game commission. Probably he's the one for that. I don't, I mean, where I'm at, I don't have any really direct interface with the commission.
All right.
And it does seem to be the case that the whole issue of wolves and wolf hybrids seems to be a pretty Lassen County centric issue. Possibly because of a known local hybrid facility.
That's their work is done with wolves. You know, I agree with you, I think the fishing game commission would be a good place to start and maybe help to help this plan, bring it back to the board of supervisors again, we need people to sign off on it or any of the severe ones that are going to be. See fit at the time. But I think that's what we have with fishing game commission for is to work on specialized issues such as this. That's why we got the commission.
My apology.
Oh, it's all right.
I'm thinking about the big fishing game commission, not the county fishing game commission.
Right, we're talking.
Sorry about that.
Oh, because of course the higher level one is the fish and wildlife.
Right, okay.
Fishing game is the Lassen County.
All right, I'm caught up now, sorry.
The big one is all the trouble, not ours.
So would that be acceptable to you gentlemen?
What is our next, he probably, no, third, third?
Is that, I'm not sure.
Third, first, they work.
They, their schedule is off because everyone has to account for COVID. And this building is hard to reserve, so they don't have a regular scheduling. It's kind of at last minute scheduling when this room is available or when you don't have to distance for COVID anymore.
And that's Brian here, of course, with fish and wildlife.
So hopefully you would have an ability to set that up for some time either. Maybe it's in short notes for, you can't actually say it because of COVID problems, but I think in the long, I think.
Eric, can you let this myself know when that meeting is in location? We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll bring it up to my commissioner. Is there anybody else? Thank you.
God, I'll be there. Thank you.
You know, I'm here with a question on that, I just wanted to follow up just a little bit. I apologize if this doesn't deliver to you guys in a sudden unconventional fashion, I wasn't looking for her. Sorry about that.
I can't hear you.
Okay, well, just to follow you guys, if this got to you guys in an unconventional manner. And hoping Tina, part of the regional manager, you know, she couldn't make it, and she asked to see if Ken and I were able to make this up first here.
Oh, no, we appreciate any attempt at communication, unconventional or not. And like I say, I think at some point you will be back in front of us. But in terms of answering some of the questions on, about this particular plan, because it's not, as Mr. Alwalt pointed out, it's not quite full form, it's more a menu of options. It might work better working through the fishing game commission.
Yeah, I understand.
But you will be in front of us again at some point.
Sure, sure. Anyway, so is that kind of, you guys would like to see us then basically re-deliver this to the commission, or you will be here to the commission, and we'll just interface with that with Brad kind of direction?
I saw that, I saw that Catalins was on their head at all. Have they received this, Dr. Catalins?
We did provide to local farm bureau, representatives at the same time, if it was ten to fifteen to four.
So we request that you keep them.
I would also recommend that the department indirectly recommend farm advisor.
If keeping them, a few of those outside groups, it gets a little, it's easier to keep their brain a loop, right? But for us, we can be working specifically with the commission. Would you also expect, or how would you suggest we also work, say, with farm advisor, the farm bureau, and Catalins at the same time, or working with fishing game commission?
If you don't buy it, I'll give it to you.
Yeah.
I think it's time for the state department of fish and wildlife to take a leadership role in developing this plan. And soliciting input from all those different agencies, but at the end of the day, being responsible for putting together a comprehensive draft plan.
Sure, I'm just trying to get a, thank you, Aaron.
Yeah, for instance, I just wanted to say, I was unsure, sorry about that. I was unsure if, how that was going to work with the commission today, or the board of supervisors. And so I did call the local president of Catalins and farm bureau to see if they, they did not know that this was happening today, I assumed that they would. And then Ray had not received it yet because of the email change, and I had just sent him while it was waiting this. So definitely engaged with all those folks. It has gotten a little complicated for me because there does seem like there's a lot of people involved, and we're kind of going in different directions. And this whole thing started, a couple of you were there, meeting with actual producers on the ground, with some deputy directors, last August, almost a year ago today. That then became a meeting with the supervisors, so we do have local producers that are involved. And then we have this body that's involved, and of course we have the representation with the farm bureau, Catalins. And it'd be good to figure out what body, what sub group in all of those can get together and start cashing these things out. I think that principal, deputy director, Blair, said that he did not want this to be a plan, another department plan that was given to Lassen County. He wanted it to be more our plan that we brought down together. And it seemed to make sense to me to have citizens and potentially affected individuals be in that on the ground level of that.
I think what we have there is to some degree the problem of, as far as I tell from Lassen County, our plan for wolves would be no wolves. And so there's simply no way around that. And that is why in the end, you're going to have to make a plan that you do give to us. And we can give you some feedback and say, yes, if you can't have part A of what we want, no wolves, then we could accept that, it's slightly more favored than anything else. But in the end, it is going to be California Department of Fish and Wildlife enforcing their wolf plan upon us because Lassen County pretty clearly has the opinion that we don't want wolves in the world. And there's just no way to dance around that, we can try. But in the end, that's what you're facing there. And I don't know how otherwise to put it to you.
We got it forced upon us, so give us a plan.
And I appreciate that.
I don't think, I don't think you had one Lassen County resident, maybe even a couple, that presented, bring them on. And like Aaron says, us producers, I don't have a permit, but it affects me because people that have permits are out looking, out buying, you know, taking up private ground because they can't afford to be out on the public lands anymore. And that's not their fault. That's fishing game's fault for bringing something that nobody wanted.
Fish and wildlife.
For fish and wildlife.
So that's our, so that's why, you know, that's where we're at. We, you know, the fishing game commission is more than willing to weigh in on some technical parts of it. And we would, I mean, fishing wild, or fishing game commission would reach out to farm bureau and Catalins. But in the end, that's where we're at, so.
Sure.
You know, you're worried about the collaboration between different groups, you know, the Catalins, the farm bureau. I mean, we're a small community, we have virtually the same, a lot of the same people are on Catalins, farm bureaus, leadership roles, some board of directors, members, they're all the same people. So even though they're two different ages, two different ages, still the same people, ninety percent of them. It's not that big of a stretch, should have changed.
Right, it's, yeah, I mean, if you include the other agencies and all, you know, I'm the wolf guy. But there's a lot of other people involved besides just myself. And so I'm just trying to figure out a way to actually pull the relevant folks together where we start working on hammering out solutions to some of the questions and problems.
So I have a question about the hybrids, you were mentioning. Obviously, we had a hybrid problem that went on for quite some time. And it affected the ranchers up there that rely on their livestock. I don't, it didn't seem to me like we got any assistance out of you guys in that. Is there any way that if we get that kind of stuff, that you guys can get in there and help us eradicate that problem?
That probably is a better question for the I work with law of wolves.
I know, I know, that's your problem.
I do know that there is some state law thresholds there for hybrids, and I just don't know what the management of those are.
Well, it took us five years. It took us five years to get that under control. I don't think it's under control now, honestly. Aaron, you might know.
Yeah, I just, I just hear the rumors of.
So is there any way you can put that in there somewhere that you will, you guys will assist with the hybrid wolf issue? I'm talking to people. Who's going to say that it's going to be known?
Um, Ben Wallen here too. There was, I think, some interesting information that was added to that email table about the knowledge now that we know that Lassen pack has two females that have bred this year. Do you have any questions about that, or that if not real reasons?
I saw a bit of nine pups.
Just the same.
A minimum of that.
Just the same question I had the other day, has it been determined that the new alpha male was maybe from, maybe a hybrid, maybe released from a private breeder or where it came from?
Yeah, we don't have his direct DNA yet because he gave it us, we have tried. All that we know is he is, he's a wolf. He is, he did sire those pups. And he has not been previously recorded in California. So that means when we finally do get his DNA, he will go to University of Idaho, that has the largest catalog to compare it to. And maybe he'll be able to tell us more about him. For instance, if he was from North East Oregon or Southwest Oregon, or what happened.
Mr. Alwalt? Well, do I have anybody else?
I see it's strange how there's no wolves in Molok here.
Well, interestingly, there was in May. We confirmed the depredation four and a half miles south of the border. And that's up on the website too, I believe the actual middle of May, a gray wolf. And same thing there, unknown to us, our analog, which is very small, had his DNA has been sent to University of Idaho. Shipping it outside like that takes a long time to get results, so I would expect three months. We said, that's, we're almost there. Maybe we should call University of Idaho, see what they have to go.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Turns out they're eight K off there, thank you.
Let's go.
That's just information, I don't know. Direction staff. You heard what I thought. This game, this game commission, that brings back whatever plan they want to close, I mean, work. So unless anybody else has something else, sir? Does that seem like reasonable direction staff? All right. Then we're going to take up, is it G four?
Still under emergency?
I think we're clear, so. Sid?
I just briefly, I'm sure Richard has more. The county is still working many hours doing what they're doing in public health departments specifically. But there's a lot of other departments that are being affected, jail has a jail next, or quarantine, you're booking for fourteen days, they're going to have a cost there. And so it's too bold, well, that may not seem like an emergency. There's still a lot of work being done, whether we agree with it or not, there's some best practice right now. And the emergency declaration allows us to seek this after this, or leave it at later date. So I think it's too bold, part of the business decision, and part of the fact that we still are in the middle of this, whether we agree with it. whether we agree with it. That's all. I have nothing else to ask for.
Yeah, I think Sid said really well, from my perspective, it's just a way of preserving our ability to potentially recover some costs at a later date if it continues.
Richard, we have to leave this every three days.
I'll make a motion with group or instead not three, but three.
You, your view and.
Mr. Gallagher has a motion.
Remember what it said. Incontinuous resolution number 2014, number 22.
Mr. Gallagher, your motion, Mr. Garrett, seconds. All in favor? I, I vote.
I just have a personal.
That brings us to page one. Unless I, if I got a hold of that.
Was that a, what supervisor had that one?
Yes, I believe there was.
This is Chairman, members of Board, page one, is a presentation sent to you from the Assessment Appeals Board, who I also work with. The suggestion has been from that board, your point keys, that you consider the establishment of a final, applications for change assessment. So there was a resolution presented in your package from the Assessment Appeals Board, which essentially lays out their positions on the issue. Of course, they are equally aware that it would equally be established here and not there. They simply ask that they carry their message to you. The idea is that there is expense associated with the filing and processing and hearing and determining assessment appeals applications. And that a small fee would do a couple of things. One, it would pray the costs, but also it is their hope that it would encourage applicants to realistically view their case before they chose to file. And so you've been presented with, and really, there's no ordinance establishing a fee being presented here today. This is just a concept conversation, whether you are interested in it or not. Because frankly, if you're not, if I don't count through today, I probably won't go further. If I do count through today, I'll probably go further because that is what your wish would be. And they know that also. There's some material in the, in the package to indicate to you that, kind of generally, the numbers of applications that have been received for the last five years. Madam Clerk here, who also serves as the deputy clerk of that board, was kind of not a pair of those. And yeah, kind of what you see is incidental folks who file one or two. And then you got a couple of folks that have a burden who sat over, appears to have a burden or settled on the assessment appeals process and, you know, and not all years, just some years. Late files, who, just some that give us sets. Well, you get a set for like every year. And so if you find, like in 2015, you get one, one group filed forty. Everybody else filed like one or two, but this group filed forty. And then in 2016, you got everybody filed one or two, and then one group filed seventy-seven. And it kind of, 2017 was a slow year. 2018 was slow with one little increase, but one group. And then 2019, we got one group filed twenty-six and some others just kind of incidental one or two. I'll tell you that the assessment appeals log, if you will, the list of appeals waiting to be heard is virtually nil, it's down now. We worked that backlog clear for some time, for a couple of years, two, three years at least, who've been a part of it, who've been processing and peripherating and, you know, a business, if you will, your business. And so there is some satisfaction there. And yet, there is this, this issue of the possible fee. I tell you that there's, there's a lot of challenges to dealing with. I came up with a number of twenty-five bucks per application. There's, there's some qualifications to what constitutes an application or what that should apply, but twenty-five bucks is really kind of a random number. I think that if I were to do the study for you all to consider, which I haven't done here before, you would find that the cost that goes into processing each application by staff, the assessor's office, my office, that clerk, is probably quite a bit more than twenty-five bucks per. And yet, you know, that was the number that was presented.
Well, first of all, kudos to you guys for kidnapping that law taken care of. Because that, that was a real thorn in the local side.
He was hanging out there.
But also, I don't know, I haven't been to an appeal for a while, but I have been to one. Seems like there's some staff in there that probably shouldn't be necessarily. And maybe we cut some costs there. I think there was like three or four people out of the assessor's office at times I've been.
Yeah, so I'm not going to.
Yeah, but I'm throwing that out there.
Even begin to have a conversation with one of the parties having too many folks there. And I don't know that I should, that's, those are staff at work or an elected official. And probably won't go there. I don't know what else to tell you, sir.
Mr. Alba?
So with this twenty-five dollar file fee, how's that going to be broke down between you, the assessor, the court, or anything?
Mine. I think if we go and do the study that's required to establish one of the fee, you're going to see generally speaking, how much time I dedicate to each application, how much time she dedicates to each application, how much time the assessors folks dedicate to each application, which you're going to find is, oh, incidentally, by the way, it's per diem, that the Assessment Appeals Board members are paid for every day that they hold hearings. Right? Because there is a fee, frankly, I don't know what it is, I think it's like two hundred bucks or something. And you're going to see that that total bargain down grant is considerably more than twenty-five. If you're, if you're asking, okay, so there's this revenue source associated with each application and at the end of the year, you take that small pot of money because it's probably not going to amount to much. Who gets it? If that's the question, I think it's the general fund.
Because this, that's.
Absolutely. It should go to the general fund. I would resist any suggestions that it go elsewhere because of the only thing, you don't earmark revenue from the fee to go to, let's say, the assessor's office. Because then what? Or to go to council's office? Because that engenders an argument that they have a financial incentive in creating more hearings in their formal applications. I just don't see it appropriate to give detractors that argument. Go to the general fund, keep yours, doesn't matter. It's not going to amount to hardly any money. But, but it will work with the prayer of the cost of you have to put into this. And secondly, the board thinks that it would encourage prospective applicants to realistically view their case. Can I answer your question, sir?
Mr. Gallagher?
I really, when I read this, I thought it was appropriate because we're asking other departments to take a look at their fees and so that we can recover some of that because we don't have any other general funding account. So I'm, I'm supportive of that because I think we should look at other avenues as well. And if twenty-five dollars is enough, maybe it should be up a little bit further.
So I, I think that you have three board members that are exploring, entertaining the idea of. I'm sorry, are you, what do you think, Mr. Alba?
I'll bet somebody else makes a good. I don't think you're demoting.
No. Well, that's what I'm saying, you assess that your final determination is, Mr. Burns, as I understand it, is simply asking, is it worthy of taking a deeper look at? And so you're not, you're not making a final ruling. All you're determining, the element is whether or not we should set Mr. Burns on this case. And I think there's enough of a question unless.
There's, there's a couple fine points that I think I wrote for direction on before I said about the writing process. And the fine point is this, so, so if you buy a piece of land, you buy a parcel, a legal parcel that has a specific legal description, right? Like say, here go problems. That could have and does have countless APNs. Because remember, APNs are a device comprised of the assessor's office for purposes of assessment. And that's all. And, and so the question is, we have heretofore required an application for each APN. And now there's good sound reasoning for that because you need an expression of value from the applicant on each of the APNs. What, you know, the assessor's office is certainly obligated to provide an assessment on each of the APNs. And so you, but, but the question is, is would you require a fee for each APN? If you, if you have, and this is kind of the exception. Like, for example, I own one legal parcel in the community and it has two APNs. Does that mean I pay two times twenty-five or does that mean I pay one times twenty-five? And that's kind of where I'm looking for direction. There's, there's that point, but the other point to be made is, is that I thought it only fair, the Assessment Appeals Board thought it only fair, that if someone makes an application for change assessment and they win in any respect, there's a reduction in any amount after hearing, then they ought to get their money back. They ought to get a refund for filing fee. Now, that is a huge amount, but essentially that they don't have to pay the twenty-five bucks to show their correctness. So, so there's two separate issues there. One is, is, is twenty-five bucks for filing fee for each APN or is it for each legal parcel? And who makes that decision? The clerk or? And the second one is, is whether you favor, and these would all be built into a draft ordinance that I would present here, whether you would support a refund for those who are victorious or not. I mean, by the way, the other argument for no refund is, is it costs twenty-five bucks or more, whether they win or not. But, you know. Shouldn't they have to pay twenty-five bucks just because?
I say that we, you know, do it for legal parcel, twenty-five bucks legal parcel. And you refine it kind of successful in the appeal.
How about, so there are some, some parcels that are just one APN equals one legal parcel. And there are some parcels that are like mine, for example, two APNs for a legal parcel. Some that are five or ten. How about we make the language where it's per APN for legal parcel? And that means if there's more APNs than legal parcels, then it's just one. Is that done right?
Mr. Alba?
I've got a question, Paul. So like, what would you do, for example, you have one parcel to eat? Is the assessor going to have to do twice as much work or the same amount of work? Because one parcel is two.
So if I have two APNs for my one legal parcel, I get an assessment per parcel. And so I could choose because maybe they say, you know, by the way, for example, I've got a larger APN and I've got a smaller APN, of the two. And let's say they come back and assess the smaller APN as equivalent in value to the larger APN on both land and improvements. And that's just not right. I'm only appealing one. They have to do an assessment on the one. If I appeal both, they have to do, they have to do an evaluation of both. And it's acceptable with two separate hearings.
So it'd be two separate hearings for your.
Possibly. Or the board could, with consent of the party, say, like, this is all really related to one person and, you know, family, so kind of like, let's do it in both at once. But still, you'd get two separate presentations from, or packets, if you will, from the assessor's office. Two applications filed by the applicant, that would be me. Two files created by Madam Clerk.
Maybe you could go by the APN. I don't know, I can go with the way I can say it.
Could you do it by both?
Well, so, I wish the assessors here, I believe that assessments like I've mentioned are made by APN at the convenience of the assessor. So that's the mechanism by which they could be appealed rather than, you know, maybe with the consent, they could be combined for purposes of appeal if there's more than one, without you have to assessing it to decide which ones and how they would want to appeal this.
So it should be by the APN then, but there's consent for the work value.
I think the main issue, because if the assessor for convenience purposes or what have you, have in some cases assigned multiple APNs for legal, per legal parcel. And that causes, you know, that may mean that somebody has thirty appeals for one, what they consider to be one parcel, one legal parcel.
So I hand you if I both, like, that's an option. Can you show us an option that would include by APN or by legal parcel? Bring that to my text board.
I think it should be the magic. I'll provide the options for both.
Anybody else? You got enough direction?
I accept. Thank you.
Then we will move on to item B two, groundwater sustainability plan letter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, Stanley Morley, I need to go to the other. We're here at the request of the legislature, you can consider sending to the governor and to the legislature, at the request of our supervisor, all officers chair for the Big Valley Groundwater Advisory Committee, to establish activity, I O U, ProDOT County, to work on the plan that you agreed to prepare because you agreed to be the groundwater sustainability agency for all that, that quality, for economic basis. So anyway, we have, under the legislation, so January 31st, 2022, to get the plan done. The difficulty that we're finding is that the legislation also requires a lot of coaching. It requires us to reach out, have public meetings, the MOU, from the advisory committee, to focus on that, getting all that public comment and bringing it together. The problem that we're having is that COVID is hindering our ability to do that because people don't want to meet, a lot of, some people don't want to meet, they don't want to be in this room there. So we try to do electronically, we have no limited internet capability in Big Valley, so it's difficult doing that. So basically, we have two tenants of the such, so one is headed down by January 31st, 2022, and have all these public outreach and consultation, beneficial users that they may be looking at, have all these technical requirements, but a noun will kind of hinder in doing that. So we're trying to be meditating and try to have an electronic meeting. It failed, it didn't work, and we think that's just an indication that people are having difficulty doing that. It's hard to have the staff to set it up and so on. So what we'd like to do, and supervisor Al can speak there, but I've been asked to do is to write a letter, we've been asked to write a letter to the governor and to the legislature asking for more time. So the letter to the governor would work through executive order. The governor is allowed through the Emergency Services Act and police power to use your executive orders. And so he would execute the order, he's modified multiple statutes, probably around fifteen statutes in one way or another, perhaps more, different regulations. And so we're saying, we also have the power to operate through the Emergency Services Act and police powers to issue an executive order to give us more time so that we can get a couple of consultation done that we're required to do. The government letter to the legislature is similar, but instead proposes a legislation to be adopted to extend that deadline. So that's basically it, supervisor Al can add. I would like to add one correction to the letter to the legislature. The, the phone number. There's a phone number to the address to the Assembly, the second address is supposed to be there, there's a phone number, telephone to the address, and that doesn't need to be there, that was derived by mistake. And so in the Congress, when you do choose to sign a letter, I would propose that, that phone is wrong. That's all I have on this question.
Questions?
This has got to be statewide, all these kind of boards and commissions and stuff. We end up with, so, is there going to be a pushback from the state on that?
You know, my first thought is, yes, I wasn't, when I went into this, I didn't think the state was going to, or I was still kind of hesitant, I didn't know if it did well, that it would end up happening, but it could. We certainly need to ask, though, we know it's to the people, so at least ask the question, can we have more time to get around the difficulty? So the people are expecting us to ask, so I think that we should. Whether the state, or the Board or not, I don't know. Yes, it's problems that the other basins are having, all of the basins, the critical old ground basins will be new this year, and the, all basins in Big Valley will do range 2022, again, January 31st, 2022. So I think it's a common problem. We wrote this from the context of our basin, from the Big Valleys, and many difficulties that we're having there. I think there's similar experiences, I don't know if it's been brought into RCRC before, I know it's been a topic that's been around, but we ask specifically for our basin, and we look at what we were having.
Mr. Alba.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, in answer to your question, you know, Jerry Burn and I both, we both know the RCRC order needs. As far as RCRC is going to be pushing back on this, and their response was not this kind, because they extended a lot of their capital to get a top floor this day. So their suggestion was, for individual basins, because some basins are right on time, right on track, and others are like us, and fall further, and fall further behind every day because of COVID, lack of, and they have, or, to be a little bit more unique, because we've been quite committed, dragging, dragging, and so we are a little bit more behind, and fall further behind every day. So their recommendation was, was for individuals to go ahead and try to get this done first, rather than RCRC stepped in. And RCRC would probably will step in, they're on their back foot, and they're not working with us as individuals. Ian, I think you did an awful job writing this letter. It was all very fashioned and together, it's very well laid out, it's very well articulated. And the way I understand it, they're going to be talking out the side of their mouth, and maybe I have to make it clear, they have such fine fashions.
Well, I can't take the credit, that, it was a group effort, a lot, there was a lot of effort on this, and from you and Hooded, and so, I welcome it, and hopefully, it will make a difference, I guess we'll see again.
We'll see again. But it was just a very good job. Yeah, I don't know, but this taking it, so I'm doing, you can see the frustration, and this can be very important, because this, Big Valley is not a single basin coming down the pipeline, because I'm sure once this wave gets through, they're going to be coming back again for other basins that are, that are falling more on, and in the last example, we're going to be down as long as the right help, this particular basin, or, or at least have another MODOC county that, that is a way of working, another county that this is, this bad.
And if you stop around, the evaluation will keep coming, and, yeah, we're, we're always happy to allocate over the states out there. Certainly, I'm engaged.
And I know Aaron knows that the state's not going to be totally surprised by us submitting something like this. We've done a similar thing with the Solid Waste Board, and the project that we have going there as well, asking for more time. So I'm sure that this isn't going to be a surprise to the state, that we're going to be asking these questions because of the pandemic, so I, I would say it's going to be welcomed, see.
Anybody else?
I would make the motion to authorize the chairman to sign these letters and get them sent off to the state standard as well.
I'll send it.
Alba moves. Gallagher seconds. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Proposed motion, carry. Then we shall move on to H3, the administration fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget adoption for identified GM office budget.
It almost happened here. John Darrell, Assistant Lieutenant, Sheriff's Office, so here we have the Sheriff's Office statute to adopt budgets for the 2020, 2021 shares, budgets for the following units, $319,000, $271 for equipment appreciation as the Homeland Security Grant, budget 28, 50540, $1,360,000, $963 for motor pool, unit 1350352, and $231,000, $980 for our contracts in boat control for budget unit 1110540. The equipment appreciation is, we have certain milestones during the Homeland Security Grant that we have to meet, if we don't meet those milestones, we have to find a return on that. And we also have communication projects that have to be completed during the summer months, and we can't wait for the full application of the budget to occur before we can afford it. And this will allow us to continue on the emergencies, instead of waiting for them. For motor pool, due to new urgency replacement cars, but due to COVID, cars departed from the lady delivery, we receive them on July 28th, and the payment is outstanding. If we don't, if we pay it in 20 days, we still will see the discount, or not, we'll have to pay additional fees and money. And for boat control, we're in the middle of summer, we have patrols going on Lake Serac County, and those purchases and repairs still need to be completed, both leave out the deed to break down. And those funds are actually being reimbursed through voting and market. There's no general funding back to the, any of the programs. Motor pool draws, or motor pools drawing with existing fund balance, and contract building the waterways for the averses on building the waterways, and then the Homeland Security Grant.
Any questions?
I'm going to. Do you need to do anything?
So you move that we adopt fiscal year 2021, 20, 2020, 2021, share budgets?
No.
For the amounts?
One second.
Pass that forward, then, 1A, 1B, and 1C?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Do I just need to write another? All, all in, oh, I need for this. So we'll go real call.
Supervisor Gallagher?
Yes.
Supervisor Hannah?
Aye.
Supervisor Hamper?
Yeah.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Tito?
Yes. Thank you. So we shall move on to the next chair. Approval of directions to the tenant's job.
Good afternoon, my, my captain of the Sheriff's Office, long story short, so you guys, so maybe I don't need that here, but the Sheriff's Office is seeking approval from the Board to free that correctional lieutenant job description. In 2018, the Board approved basically a realignment of the management structure of the Sheriff's Office. It includes two captains and two lieutenants, one for each division, one for patrol, one of each of the patrols, and a of each of the jail. It's been very efficient for us. We'd like to backfill a intended lieutenant opening that we have right now with the retirement captain bowl, the sheriff plans to promote one of our current residents as captain. So, as you guys know, the jail has been a very complex operation over the last couple of years. So moving forward, we'd like to retain correctional staff that has the expertise in corrections to fill that position. So anyways, long story short, financially, the, the cost to the county will be a cost savings. We would request that be, upon approval, the correctional lieutenant would be placed in a POA range 25B, and the current lieutenant is in a POA range 25A, so there'd be a final certificate, so it would be a little bit of cost savings there. As well as, we have requests to move that position into the management.
What's the difference between A and B?
It's a, the, the D is tailored more towards correctional deputies, it's a lower pay scale, and the A requires more training. For example, the, the current lieutenants are 830.1A peace officers, the jail staff are 830.1C peace officers, so there's a considerable amount of different training, police academy center.
Any other questions?
I suppose I would defer on.
I'll make a motion that we approve the creation of the correctional lieutenant position, set compensation at range 25, POA B base bail, and including position in the Alaskan County Peace Officer Association National Unit. Approved, filling the existing choice of that position in jail using Fund 1,000-0525 with the correctional lieutenant.
Second. Tom, grab a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion, carry. Thank you very much. Cal Fire.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this will be real quick. I'm just asking for your ratification of the agreement that I executed with Cal Fire for their rental of the Fairgrounds to prevent their incident command. I executed the agreement because of the necessity and urgency of the act, and it's so good, we kind of discovered there isn't real clear authority in county policy to make secondary arrangements, and so I'm asking for your ratification. We'll also be looking in future, I think, very back at policy to make that authority clear.
How long was the duration?
I believe it was fourteen days. So the price that we arrived at is $7,000.
Mr. Alba.
Richard, I, I know that these things come up in a hurry, and there's no fair warning per se, but over the past several years, and all this, and I'm the manager, obviously, Cal Fire is willing to work with us, and it is after the fact that this is approved, and you had a time to, it's a pleasure.
Yeah, so, the answer is yes. You know, I've suggested in the past, if everyone here can maybe work out, you know, pre-agreement, if they do, you know, because oftentimes, we may cancel other events because of the emergency or what, or what have you, and I, it's my feeling that Cal Fire, whoever should pay a premium for that opportunity.
Did, did we cancel it in advance? Well, I was thinking that racist.
But having said that, there's generally three different entities that we might be dealing with, one of which is Cal Fire, and the others would be the Forest Service, multiple forests, Flussas or Alasman, or, or PLM. And so having agreements with all of those might be problematic. My thoughts on it are, we just adopt a policy for those types of, of agencies with a prescribed charge for that. And, and rather than make it a byline or a great reduced, adopt a policy that in the event, some sort of emergency, we'll rent the following facilities for the following prices, and, and they will have priority over other things. So I'd like to bring that back for future discussion, of course, with the Fairland here, because that's, although modified to other county-owned facilities, it's almost always a fair. Richard, maybe that could be added to the B schedule as well, instead of, you know, having an agreement, just add it to the B schedule.
Yes.
Agreed.
Any other questions?
So we make a motion to ratify the agreement, provide all the additional corrections to have.
So I have a motion to ratify the agreement, carry.
Sorry.
Mr. Hamper, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, carry. COVID-19 care to act funding.
Mr. Chairman, I was taking it H6 and H7 at the same time, they're both related items. As the Board knows, we applied last month for care money in the amount, which were allocated in the amount of $2.94 million for the county. That, as you also know, that care money, at least currently, comes with a lot of restrictions and a very short timeframe for which to spend it by. And so, and, and also, it's not, because this is a brand-new funding source, it's not otherwise included in the carryover budget that we adopted or operate in there. So the, the basic purpose of, of the first item is to ask you to approve appropriations for that money. And then I want to go through some of the details, it's got to be, the funds have to be obligated by October 30th, unless there's an extension agreement, which we're only hoping that there are. And hopefully, it'll be through December 30th, which will also be a really challenge, really challenging to get that money put to work by then.
Very short.
Yeah, so, so I'm asking you to adopt the budget, but also to waive some of the otherwise required competitive procurement processes, not because we don't want to be competitive, or we don't want to get competition out there, but simply because we don't think there's enough time to comply with our normal competitive process. We will obviously be doing whatever we can to, to do that, and effort to expedite the expenditure of this fund, but asking you to adopt a resolution, waive some of the competitive procurement processes. And by the way, we'll be working, as we have had to try to extend the deadlines that have been imposed by virtue of this care money act.
Where's the money get allocated?
I'm sorry, what?
Where's the money get allocated?
We've already, so the, the money will, will be coming, we already received one-sixth of the money.
Okay.
And it will be coming, as we currently understand, in increments of one-sixth.
Okay. So what can you, what can you use that money for?
In general, I guess the general characterization is, it can be used for COVID response.
So how do you service it?
That, as we interpret it, and I believe is correct, is also would include some major costs at the jail, or, some of which we've been considering already, but some infrastructure, capital improvements that need to be done there, perhaps other departments. We've got a, kind of an informal working group of department heads, trying to figure out what the best use of that money is, but a lot of it will be staff time in response.
Mr. Alba.
Richard, I thought we had until December 31st to extend these parts, not October 30th.
The obligation date is October 30th, expenditure date is December 30th.
Well, if this is for COVID response, we may have something come out right away, if we weren't even knowing anything about. I mean, after that, I mean, it's just have an oxymoron, in my opinion, if you have to turn this money, then you have something that comes up, and you can spend it by December 31st, if you can't, because you already turned the fund.
You're absolutely right.
But I do agree with you as far as, in the resolution, to suspend the procurement of so many different contracts, and it is, it's just not going to fit, so I, I don't want to think about it.
Any other comments or questions? Shall we take it up, then? What we're looking for first is a motion to approve the budget for creation of $2,240,000 funded by the unit number 160-1601 for coronavirus related. Mr. Alba moves. Mr. Gallagher, seconds. Do I need a discussion on this? Looking for a forfeit, so I roll call them.
Supervisor Gallagher?
Yes.
Supervisor Hannah?
Aye.
Supervisor Hamper?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Tito?
Yes. Okay, and then I will also, I'm, I'm motion to adopt the resolution.
Twenty dash three, four.
Mr. Hamper moves.
Second.
Mr. Hamper, seconds. Again, roll call them.
Supervisor Gallagher?
Yes.
Supervisor Hannah? Supervisor Hannah?
Aye.
Supervisor Hamel?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Aye.
Supervisor Teter?
Motion carries. Do you have any information for the board supervisors, Mr. Chairman?
No, just thank you for the additional title in my next chapter in my book about how the planning department is moving too fast, because that's a new line.
On that note, we will adjourn.